All right, folks. Good evening, everyone. We apologize that, oh, thank you. We are a few minutes behind. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on June 28, 2022, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Moved by Ms. O'Mache, seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? Okay, that is unanimous with all of us here. And we have one more motion that I'm waiting. That is, okay, that's not working. It's not ready? It's ready. Yeah, okay. Mr. Frisch, do you have a motion?
The one from 606.
The one from 606?
All right. Madam-
Madam Chair, I move that the Board authorize legal counsel to take all necessary steps to join in multi-district litigation number 2913 pending against Jewel Labs, Inc., on a contingency fee basis, including the filing of a complaint in that litigation according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session.
Is there a second? Second, and my Ms. Corbett Sanders, all those in favor? Okay, and that motion passes unanimously with those of us here. Excellent. I also have a submitted written request for Dr. Anderson to virtually attend today's work session. All those in favor of approving? Okay, that's approved. Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, good evening. It is a great pleasure to be able to introduce the MSAOC for their presentation of their annual report. This group is an amazing group of people who have been very dedicated in meeting on a monthly basis. Unfortunately, I was not able to meet at many of their meetings because of their virtual conduct of those meetings. However, I am forever grateful of the work that the MSAOC did this year and continues to do on behalf of our students. It is truly a brain trust that we are great, we benefit greatly from. Thank you. And let me provide introductions. I apologize to Mr. Bussie, who is the staff liaison, and our chair, George Becerra and co-chair, Kenneth White. We are forever grateful for your work, and I don't have your name, I'm sorry. Okay. Charlotte, okay, thank you. And so with that, I am going to hand it over to Mr. White and Mr. Becerra.
Well, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chairman Pekarsky, all school board members, and also Dr. Braybrand. As mentioned, this is MSAOC's annual report for the 28th year, either under the superintendent's realm or under its advisory committee. MSAOC for the public stands for Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee. I'd like to thank, introduce what you've done a little bit, and also like to thank them for the work that they provided to assist in this, to Mr. Kenny White, who represents Lee District. Dr. Sharonda Farish is a chair in waiting. So the way that, the way it works out now is we have two co-chairs every year, because this is a lot of work. Put on one person, as you can imagine, the topics that we'll deal with. And she is an assistant principal at James Madison High School. And then Dr. Bussie, as I'd like to say, is the rock in foundation. He was on the first MSAOC when it was under the superintendent's realm, and he's been on all 28. And with that said, then, I also like to, also to lay out what we're going to have here. On the first slide, as you see, is our name and also our charge for this year that was approved by the Board last year. Second slide, and the most important slide in my book, is our members. And you can see that we're full of different folks, and we try to fill them up as best we can, also with changes over the years of people volunteering with our group. I'd like to present to a recognition for the members who are here, if they could stand up. I really would like that. Thank you. And with that said, if you're looking at a slide, I don't want you to come out of here thinking that there's no superintendent's office, let's say, help on this. We've been blessed by the Boards, the last two Boards, to have two representatives on the superintendent's liaisons. Dr. Sloan Presidio is the chief academic officer, and also the CEO. At the beginning of the year, it was Dr. Lisa Williams, and interim now, Dr. Nardis King. So that spot up there is, the superintendent has the option to choose someone else besides those two to be a voting member. That's common with a lot of other advisory committees, but obviously, that spot is not a voting member, that's why it's blank. So with that, the first slide, we laid out. The second slide is with our membership. Other members I'd like to thank, who I'm glad that they stood, is Dr. Henry. As you know, with many advisory committees, there's not enough spots sometimes that we can fill up, but we still have that passion, right? It's still people you have public come in and they, and they participate, even though they might not have a title or a name. But I'd like to recognize Dr. Henry from the College Success Program, and also Ms. Craig, who is not here. She might be virtually, or public, the public link, so we don't know who's watching publicly for helping us out. Dr., or Ms. Craig is with a sixth-grade teacher out of Stenwood? Is it Stenwood or Sternwood? I'm sorry, if I, there's so many elementaries. So I'd like to mention that. Also, some recognition is the four subcommittees that we've had during the years in the conveners. We call them conveners slash chairs. For the Advanced Academic Program, it was Mr. Rob Perez and Mr. Edward Osborne. We've had Closing Achievement Gap, we've had Dr. Farish and Dr. Henry. We had for hiring, teacher hiring and retention, Ms. Kim Anabar. And I apologize for not mentioning Ms. Anabar's name. She's also part of this group here that the Board voted on money-wise to add to underneath Dr. Presidio or the chief academic officer to help out in other areas with academics and equity, but at the same time be also another liaison to MSAOC. So we do appreciate the money that has been put in to helping out resources. And the student discipline is Mr. Bob Shaw and Ms. Pam Simkins. And other folks, I'd like to help out on. One thing that I've, we've preached for the last decade is the collaborative effort of true data, and we're probably one of the few committees that has a data person in that works with the FCPs, because our motto is, we need to have the correct data so we can have good conclusions, sound conclusions from the same data, instead of us foiling it or getting our own data or what have you out there. So I'd like to thank Mr. Manuel Bonham. He works with, also, I think, the chief academic office, but he's been for a couple of years. So like I said, we try to use the same data you have, so you know where we're coming from, and we know where you're coming from. And also Ms. Tabitha Temple and Ms. Henson for helping in the development of the final part of the report, all gathering things up and edits, and making it strong that it With that said, I'd like to, me personally, I would like to thank all the members for the last two years who've given me the privilege to be here virtually or in person, to present to you all our reports. This is really a good group of folks, and I wouldn't be on for my 13th year if I thought I was wasting my time. Some other recognitions, Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders, Doctors Presidio and Dr. King for their 1,000% effort. You don't have to physically be at our meetings or virtually, but we know where you stand for all the years of advocacy that you've done. We understand you as the budget chair, where your priorities are due match with your, what is on that budget paper. So we do, we do know where you were at, and we didn't have to see you always virtually. And also with the spirit of collaboration, I'd like to thank the Board for the efforts that you've given us, the resources you've given us for including us in hiring of the superintendent, for every LT position in the last two years under your term, that you allowed us to be on those hiring panels. I'd like to thank the Board and Dr. Braybrand, of course, for allowing that. And also for hearing our letters, or our speeches, or our positions, or our stances at certain times of the year, when you're voting things, or when you, we thought you needed input. With that said, I'll hand it over to the last two slides, to my co-chair, Mr. Kenneth White.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Kenneth White. I represent the Lee District under Tamara Darrenack-Cofex as the school board member. So for the last couple of years, as you all have the full report, the last few years we've been doing this report at a glance. We figured that's just a good way to collate the pertinent information of the report. So we have it broken down into six topics, where we define the purpose as we define it. We have our findings, and then we have our recommendations or conclusions. So I'll just spend a few minutes to go over the highlights of this report, and then we'll open it up to you all's questions, if that's, that works. So we have our six topics, as George said, like the four hallmarks that have always been there, the AAP program, student discipline, closing the achievement gap, and the teacher hiring and retention. I mean, that was kind of new. And more recently, we added the chief equity officer, and the parent hesitancy is a direct product of the pandemic. So we'll start there with the parent hesitancy. To say it fully, it's the parent hesitancy about returning students to school post-pandemic. Parent hesitancy by itself could lend itself to many things. But we looked at that, starting with the pandemic, 10,000 students have, or parents have taken students out of the FCPs system, and basically, we want to know why. That number, 10,000, is significant enough to warrant our recommendation, which would be a survey to just ask the parents, why did they remove the students from the FCPs system? Whether those students went to homeschooling, or they went to private school, we just figured it'd be good to know why that significant number made the decision not to return to FCPs once they went to in-person learning again. The next topic, Chief Equity Officer. When Dr. Williams came on, there were some, in our opinion, like missteps in the way that the position was put out there, as far as the job duties were. But then, the job itself, other, it got expanded way beyond what the job description was. So we think that we should hire a new CEO now, basically, or as soon as we can, but reevaluate the position so that, one, there's adequate staffing for that office, so that she, she or he has the support staff necessary to carry out the functions of that office, and also reassign any unrelated offices from under the CEO. Moving on to closing the achievement gap, we know that there's a gem in the College Success Program, and with that, we've seen that those students participating in the CSP have outperformed the FCPs cohorts in the English and Math SOLs. So as a committee, we believe that, you know, if we, if the CEO can increase the funding of the EISA III to expand to the CSP participation, and to essentially fund existing and new Avid and EIP, the Early Identification Program sites, adjustment and fees increases to expand Title I and school sites with student populations in the most need. Student discipline has been one of those that's been on the reports probably since Dr. Bussie started, but at least the last quarter century. Unfortunately, it's one that's still on the report, because there's some inequities that still need to be addressed or corrected. For example, last year, Black and Hispanic students were still nearly twice as much to be suspended than their Asian and white counterparts for doing the same or similar offenses. So that's been on the report for, like I said, the last quarter century. It needs to be addressed. I know that the cultural proficient training that's been rolled out is a great start, but more is needed to focus on those suspensions. And so the ECR team should provide intentional training, starting next year, for teachers in cultural competencies, and understanding their own biases in dealing with classroom management issues, and provide trainer-trainer sessions for school equity teams. Moving on to the next topic of our teacher hiring and retention, that, there's a, we feel that the system should not be so decentralized when it comes to hiring teachers. There would need to be an online system that should be fully implemented with division-wide standards for hiring at the school level, which would detail the norms and practices for screening, questions, interview protocols, and panel compositions. So without that, there's been a desperate impact on qualified Black and Brown applicants. And lastly, the advanced academic programs, we define that as, you know, address increased opportunity to learn for, to learn for underrepresented groups. Currently, not all elementary schools, one of the things that we focused on when the subcommittees did the work, not all elementary schools offer accelerated math. And we found that the schools that offer accelerated math sets the students up to take Algebra I in seventh or eighth grade, and those students that take Algebra I in those middle school years tend to go on and take more rigorous coursework in high school, whether that be in the AP program or the IB program. So there, we say the CEO should ensure all elementary schools offer accelerated math and implement a continuum of service in middle and high school for the young scholars. I see Mr. Osborne perked up. Young scholars is, is his thing. So that's just a glance of, at a glance, or a highlight of something that was already condensed. But with that, I'll let my co-chair say a few words, and then we will open it up to questions.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity again. I wanted to say a couple of remarks before we got to the Q and A portion that, of all the questions you have. First is to Mr. Plattenberg. I know he's not here today, and it's just to, just appreciate and congratulate his, his tireless efforts to help us out over the years, in terms of being cooperative, answering our questions, hearing our advocacy's, hearing his points of view, and then personally hearing my thoughts. I'd like to wish him, wish him well his next adventure as the superintendent of the city of Fairfax. The next other remarks we'd like to have is for Dr. Braybrand. MSAOC would like to also congratulate you and appreciate yourself for your years of service here in FCPs, for all your dedication and big heart in trying to make this a better educational system for all the children and staff who walk through it in any FCPs school or facility. I personally like to thank you for stepping up as an individual tutor to ESL kids, to change your career paths from the corporate world to the world of Bell, to the joining FCPs community. I know we may not have agreed 100% on all issues, but I like, what I like to tell folks is, if I can agree with my elected officials 80% of the time, then there's good work being done. When people ask me for the first time, what do you think of Dr. Braybrand? I say he has one of the biggest hearts that I have ever seen. On a more personal note, I give him my own Cliff Hardison Award, which most people know here, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I know you know, and maybe some of the staff, Mr. Smith and some other folks, is what he instilled, what I saw as an advocate at first, to have that big heart. So that's what I see in you. That's just my own, George Becerra, recognition. Who would have thought in 2021, 2012, when I met you, sir, when you came to MSAOC, presented into priority school initiatives with, who else? Dr. Terry Date. Who would have thought I'd been in the presence of two superintendents? Again, I just, MSAOC wishes the best for you and your family on the next phase of your life. So with that said, I'll transition over to- with our Q and A portion, and I guess the Board rules is just whoever, or you guys do that.
I got this, George, but thanks. Board, as is our tradition, board members will pose their questions, they will have up to three minutes, and response from the committee would be greatly appreciated. We do have until 7:00 this evening, so very much appreciate if people don't need the full three minutes, that'd be greatly appreciated. So I have Ms. O'Mache, followed by Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Becerra and Mr. White, for your diligence, and of course, for the entire committee, who always does exceptional work. It was my privilege to work with you all not too long ago, and it's, I'm really proud to see where we've landed, and you all always produce one of the best reports, so this is really helpful. I did want to ask, just in terms of, well, for one, I'm really happy to see the report card idea reflected. I think that's an exciting start for tracking kind of where we are as a division. So I wanted to ask, overall, in terms of trends that you're observing, specific to FCPs or more broadly, right? So the charge of kind of looking at post-pandemic impacts, where we've landed, building trust in the community, what maybe have you noticed overall, if anything, that stood out as particular opportunities for growth for FCPs specifically, as opposed to kind of general trends of, obviously, what's been happening in education?
The way we're going to work this, we have different areas of, obviously, the work-
Sure.
And I'll pass this over to Dr. Bussie, who will handle reopening of schools, parent hesitancy. We have Dr. Farish with closing achievement gap, and Mr. White with the other three sections of AAP, student discipline, teacher hiring retention, and equity. And I'd like to start off with Dr. Bussie, if you can start with that, and I'd like to chime in on that.
Certainly. Good evening. It's my pleasure to respond to the question. I think, as said earlier, in our report, there's a gem. The College Success Program, when we looked at the hard data, and the students in the College Success Program are our client students in terms of minority student achievement, they're almost the same. They outperform, the participants in the College Success Programs outperform their cohort in every dimension, in reading, in math, in advanced academic program. So if we're going to look for areas of growth, we should be bringing that program up to scale. There's evidence, there's research evidence showing that the program works, and that should be one of the starters for expanding, not only closing the achievement gap, but expanding opportunities for students to have opportunities to learn. So that would be the first thing. Expand the College Success Programs, bring it up to scale. I think we'd see payoffs in terms of closing the achievement gap and closing the opportunity gap in that regard.
I'd like to add to that, Ms. O'Mache, you had mentioned the trends or anything. I think the one trend, if you're not, I think, is nationally, is obviously the inequities that has occurred prior, and now it is more blown up since the pandemic. And that's why our report has a section with equity. If we applaud Dr. Reed, Dr. Braybrand working together, which, from my understanding, on your annual work calendar, the first work session is the educational equity policy, right on July 12. So that sets the tone of where this Board is going in the new superintendent, with the first thing on the agenda for a new superintendent and a new Board as you work together. That's what I would kindly answer of where we're going with trends, because that is the key, is that equity piece that oversees every layer of our report, that has transitioned probably in the last two, three years, right? As nationally things, it hasn't been closing the achievement gap, it's this or that. Now it's equity and encompasses everything.
Right. But perhaps, I don't know if you can elaborate more specifically, just in terms of, outside of overall trends, specific, I said areas of growth, but perhaps if I just say points of weakness, we'll be more clear, that are particular to our division, or perhaps there aren't ones that stood out, but-
Not that resonates quickly, but at the same time, in our report, we do mention for a survey why children had left, right, when it started at 10,000, dropped down to 2,000 or 3,000, maybe for reasons of the vaccine in the second semester, but why that, not distrust, but maybe that connective piece wasn't there, where parents felt that other options were better. So that's kind of a long way around, is saying, let's see how that survey data.
George, can I add to that as well? And one of the areas, again, going back to the College Success Programs, we're going to, the systems are moving ahead in terms of the science of reading and the science of math. Clearly, there's initiative there. There's a piece that's missing, and that's the piece, for example, on the Avid Program, really works with students in terms of mindset, executive functioning, whatever, and that's a critical piece that has to be part of this movement ahead on science and math, using the science of math and reading. So that, and that's one of our recommendations. Some people call it social emotional learning, but it's all related to mindset, executive function. That's a critical piece, and that's why we're asking for an expansion, particularly for the Avid Program. We could start off in Title I schools, but in addition to making those improvements in reading and math instruction, we really cannot forget the fact that we have to work with students in terms of the executive function, social emotional learning, and also with respect to their mindset. So that would be a critical, I think that would be a critical piece moving forward in terms of that. And if you read our report, we really dwell on that particular point in our report.
No, beautifully said. Thank you, Dr. Bussie. I think, you know, yeah, boredom, or lack of motivation, or frustration, feeling you can't learn, are all things that can be changed, and I really appreciate you highlighting that. And I think even for my colleagues, as we think about the science of reading and the work that we're doing to incorporate those pieces, thank you so much for that. I want to pivot a little bit to, you mentioned just now in your presentation, as partial components of reassigning related offices, tasks, or expanding the CEO's staff team, et cetera, as ideas for restructuring. Obviously, we're in a really unique moment, where there's a huge opportunity for potential reorganization, rethinking, and I did notice in your report, you had quite a few more. So I just wanted to give you a chance to flesh out a little bit further, the broader vision of how reorganization could look like, now that we have a big opportunity to actually do that. And I know that my colleagues will be having conversations with our new superintendent in elevating what we'd like to see reflected.
All right. On the area of equity, thank you for giving us the opportunity on answering your structural questions, as Dr. Braybrand knows, as Dr. Garza-Pryor, and Dr. Dale, Dr. Dominich. It's a time for the new superintendent with the Board to come in, and what is, what is that structure coming in? And that's move things around, connect different pieces here, the chief academic office with the chief equity office. If you look at the structure right now, if you look at the FCPs organizational chart, the CEO has many components, maybe that at first, many years ago, had good thoughts and good intentions, but then- good intentions, but things need to get off that person's plate to deal with the true equity piece. In our recommendation, we had mentioned, for example, in a suggestion is TJ. Dr. Brabrant, as you remember, TJ was never under the chief equity office, it never existed, it was under a region. We're just saying, look at that avenue to get off the equity piece, because it was, it could be handled somewhere else. Right? I'm not, we're not saying where, we might have suggestions, but to look at that piece. Other aspects is to the hearings office, that we mentioned in our report, that it's, read it verbatim, to be moved under the superintendent's office, because he conducts discipline hearings and determines outcomes on behalf of the division superintendent. Also with the Bunsman office, is, should stay there, that's one other piece that they have, right? I'm trying to answer the question, would it stay, what not, and what to keep. Plus, what Dr., or Mr. White said earlier, is the job description of the CEO when Dr. Williams came in. But what, but the job description, the reality would occur, is there's more stuff put on her plate, which was not on the job description. You cannot, if we don't even have education equity policy now, how are we going to add to the plate of a person that deals with the calendar, that deals with this, because everyone has the buzzwords of equity? But we have to be focused in on that, and it has to expand, right? We have suggestions on FY '24 budgets given with Dr. Reed coming in, the way that she's structured North Shore District, you see, they have four people in their equity office. We have one. A lot of people talk about scaling up. I'm talking about a couple of thousands versus near 200,000. There's, our suggestions on our report say that. So it is a good time, it's also a good time to connect the CEO and CAO and CEO offices more collaboratively, just because prior to Dr. Williams, it was Dr. Duran, and what was his title? As most people know, it was CAEO. He had both spots, so that's why it has to work together. I don't know if
Okay. I know those are some, but there are even more in the report, so. Yeah, I just encourage my colleagues to elevate those, I think, as we have conversations with the next superintendent, which kind of brings me to the next point of wanting to make sure these recommendations not only go to her, but that there is an initial conversation, and I certainly would like to facilitate that, if that's not already in the works, or if it has not occurred, we can follow up to make sure that that happens. Yeah, and then, just with my remaining time, there's a lot more to talk about here, but I did want to just kind of pose, what do you all need from us, and what do you see to be, you know, critical gaps in actualizing this work moving forward? You come every year, you give us brilliant ideas. I want to see them implemented, but I'd like to hear from you all.
I'm going to reiterate, I said nicely, the educational equity plan, policy that you guys are in the start, started with the other day, June 14th, you started that, July 12th, you have it, it looks like it will move forward, and then implement it sometime in the near future. I'm going to agree with the things that were mentioned on June 14th, with Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders, you, Ms. Omeish, you, Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara, of the aspect of an accountability system, right? On that equity lens, on that matrix that Mr. Karen Keys-Gamara says in terms of the school board. As select, Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders said, to improving those metrics in the strategic plan, to emphasize importance, we're in the time that we're in, we're restructuring, in the next year, you will talk with the superintendent about a new strategic plan. We have to have the CEO person in place to be at the table, not after. And it's a great time, like you said, it's a great opportunity, because a lot of the LT members are new, within probably new hires to auto wait the four years, they've never done a strategic plan in FCPS. So we need that person also hired, when they start, when you guys start that creation. So that's what we need, other things mentioned is expanding the CEO office. Again, that's budget, that's money, but all the things that you mentioned in your work session, there were thumbs up from us, so that's where.
The accountability system, I didn't tell them to say it, but that is exactly the motion that y'all are seeing before you for the future.
And on that accountability system.
I'm just saying. So look forward to everyone's support on that. I know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really quickly.
Dr. Farish?
Yeah, something we talked about a lot was getting input from staff, FCPS, you know, our county, and how they feel about these initiatives. So I think that that would be awesome. I don't know if we do it through a survey, but it's something that we would love, you know, to hear their voice, and see what they think is most important, and even hear their ideas on how we can move forward with some of this work.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you, and thank you to the committee for all their hard work this year. I want to talk about two of the recommendations. First, with recommendation B, around the chief equity officer. It's interesting, you tend to get the candidates you want based on the job prospects that you put out there. So it makes perfect sense to me that if we want a top-flight chief equity officer, we need to advertise a position that attracts a top-flight equity officer, who understands that the intent of the board is to give them the authority to do their work. So I appreciate that recommendation. I also appreciate you describing Dr. Reed's approach and her division. Did you all look at other school divisions by chance to see how they structure their offices and have any ideas based on that?
Yes, Dr. Bussie, I think, had looked, when we brought the subject of education equity policy that you guys were talking about, we did do the first brushes.
Yeah, we did.
Right. So I would defer to you, sir, but, and Ms. Kim Anabar that we work with, that comes from the chief academics office, we're trying to be collaborative, right? We're trying to see where the system is going, who are the players. Yes, we did, I don't know if you wanted to expand more than that, Dr. White?
No, I think, that's what we did, but one of the things we did see is that there was a high turnover in chief equity officers, in terms of, we'd look at a particular school district, and then we'd go back a couple of months later, and the person was gone. So that's, I think that goes with the territory, it's a tough job, and whatever, but we did look at other school districts.
At times, as well. How much of that is, do you think is due to similar issues that we have necessarily with the structure of the chief equity officer's office, and whether or not enough support is being put there for their work?
That's kind of two-sided answer I could give, because you know what, this is a premier work area for, right, FCPS, right? But at the same time, there's collaborative efforts at starting. There might not be the full bridging of things, but I do see where that structure is, individuals, maybe departments. But at the same time, just the reality is, Dr. King, Dr. Williams before had no full staff, right? They can ask for help from another group department, but there's no one dedicated specialist, assistant executive director helping that person, so.
Well, and I would note that with the example given, we're a much larger division, and perhaps we could even use more support for the work.
But we do appreciate the money and the budget that you guys have put in, so it's not like, like I said, it's steps. One thing we'd like to come out of this is, on the equity side of things, this will be a maybe two-year process here, this is not going to happen overnight. So we wanted to come, and the next steps, and Mr. White is going to say, is, it will take us as a community to grow, and we want to be part of the growth, but we also don't expect it overnight.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, and look forward to having further conversations with the incoming superintendent and colleagues around budget priorities when the time is right. Turning to student discipline data, or student discipline, I think it's number D, letter D. First, I appreciate being provided with some data. I don't think we've been given discipline data since 2020. So this might be the first occasion where one of the advisory committees is getting the data that the board is not. We did? Was it in a Brabrant briefing?
We received it in March, but it was not disaggregated.
Okay. All right. Well, that's good to know. On that front, one of the issues that concerns me, that we've talked a bit about as a board, is new law in Virginia, mandatory reporting by principals. I'm wondering if you all discussed any of that, in terms of ways to mitigate the impacts of that, in addition to your recommendations around addressing the disparities?
White?
Sorry, there it is. No, actually, we did not discuss that, that new law as part of the data that our subcommittees gathered.
Well, I will be very interested to see the data next year, after it's been in force for, you know, I guess July 1st is the first day. So I'll be interested to see that data, and I'm sure the committee will as well. And, you know, even if it's not part of the charge, hearing from you all throughout the year about ways that you might be seeing other places, you know, grappling with such things, that'd be very helpful to us, I think.
No, thank you for bringing that up, I'll make note of it, and we will definitely keep our eye on that.
It's certainly part of our legislative agenda, so hopefully we will get that changed in the future. I appreciate all your work on this, and obviously, all of the appointees here as well. Thank you for all of your work this year on this as well.
Maybe if we can collaborate, if you're talking about legislative agenda, I'm assuming that's passed at the end of this calendar year, so maybe if, whatever day there is at the beginning, maybe we can give some insights on that, going to make it timely with your legislative package as it goes to the General Assembly. So maybe that's, that's a homework that we'll put down for a response time of maybe November, by the time you pass it in December, your legislative package.
Mr. Busser, we actually adopt our legislative package at the end of October, beginning of November timeframe, so if you all could take a look at what you've seen thus far, and have any sort of ideas ahead of time, that would be greatly appreciated. And Mr. Frisch is an excellent lead on the legislative, so I encourage you to speak with him. Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. I'm grateful to piggyback on Mr. Frisch's comments. I just met last Friday with the new captain over at the West Springfield Police Department, and I think, just in conversations with the police, and also with our principals, I think nobody knows exactly what this new law is going to look like in practice. So I think there's also maybe a conversation that we could have about, does this impact the MOU? You know, what training needs to happen with our SROs? Because they're unclear. Is it that the principal reports to them? Is this external filing that's done, separate from the SRO? What does this look like? So I have, I agree with Carl, grave concerns about what this looks like in practice, and who it's most likely to hurt. So I would love any support we can get in helping not have this turn into what I'm afraid it may turn into, would be much appreciated. I also just wanted to ask, in looking to expand the job description, which I think is absolutely appropriate, have you all looked at the job description and kind of given like a draft look at what you think is missing and not missing in the job description?
Are you talking about for the new CEO?
Yeah, sorry about that.
I didn't know there was a new job description out. All I know was the C E O, if that will, is replacing the CEO, yes, we have seen the C E O.
Oh, that's what I meant, the CEO, sorry, the chief equity officer. So I didn't.
I didn't know there was a new one, but last one, we, yeah, but I didn't know there's a new one out.
No, no, I just didn't know if you all had things that you wanted to contribute to that job description, since it's been living out there, is there more that needs to happen with it? Sorry, Dr. Ivy.
So, Ms. Cohen, I know that we have Mr. Smith here, who is biting at the bit to be able to update us on that.
And I would say that, good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. I would say that we haven't changed the CEO job description since we hired Dr. Williams into the role. And so we, at this point, don't have any intention of changing that job description, and we'll be posting the job as soon as Dr. Reed comes on board, and having discussions with her.
Dr. Reed will be looking at all positions, and slowly looking at our organization, and determining if there will be any adjustments and new descriptions and adjustments, and yes, the CEO is one of those positions, and she had begun to have some preliminary questions and discussions, both with myself and with Dr. King, and just learning, as she has begun to have discussions with her senior leadership, in what our roles and responsibilities are. But she wants to take the time to thoughtfully learn, and she wants to have discussions with the board. And so she's going to be doing that over the next, you know, once she transitions and gets here. And so I know that she will thoughtfully review your report, and will be making some decisions, and will much, very much so, want to hear your input.
Right. On page five of our report, we did mention those items, at the same time when Dr. Ivy had said, I'd be remiss not to say that Dr. Reed accepted our invitation in April to attend our, and that was at first on June 9th, but then it got moved back, and obviously, she's in the middle of flying and moving, so, and we appreciate that she made that commitment, but in our report, we do mention equity policy, that that should be part of her job, and not to waste, equity audit, that we haven't talked about, and also the resources that we've talked a lot about.
Yes. Yeah, I would just hope that before that gets advertised, that Dr. Bussie and MSAOC would be consulted and, okay.
Yeah, there are no advertisements on the horizon at this time, we're just business as usual, and, but with equity as a focus, with the equity policy on the agenda in the upcoming work session, as was stated here. So the work will continue as we, you know, work out what the positions will be, and how they will be organized.
And Dr. Reed will be here on Thursday night, where she will be sworn in, and I'm sure that she will interact with each of our advisory committees, as well as with the board going forward. I know that prior to a work session, we actually have a board retreat. Ms. Cohen?
I'm so grateful that you highlighted the EIP program and Avid. I will say, I have a child who went through Avid, and I now have a child who's interested in going to college, so I'm an awfully big fan. And just getting to go to the EIP graduation, we didn't get to go this year, it was a meeting night, but going last year, I would like us to figure out how to utilize that program to grow it, but also maybe to better utilize it in the grow your own, like come back to FCPS, because these kids are amazing, and the stories that they can tell are hopefully future graduates. So I'm really hoping, I know that it's an amazing program run by amazing people, I know COVID was really tough and they persevered, but I'd really love to see us get involved in increasing that considerably, and ensuring, I will say, I did not know that we didn't have Avid in all of our Title I schools, so definitely a passion project for us over here that we'll be very happy to help with seeing how that can be done. I also just really quickly wanted to touch on accelerated math. I know that you have heard from this board time and time again over this year, the advocacy for making sure that that happens in every single one of our schools, it was part and parcel of the conversations that we had about TJ. So that is an expectation of this board, and we will continue to work with you to make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. I know that it truly takes a village, and you guys have created that for us, and it's much, much appreciated. Thank you for this comprehensive report. You guys always bring us really good information, and I always hope that it is a springboard to action, and we've made some progress, but certainly can do much better. I would like to talk a little bit about the equity issue and the change of law with respect to discipline. I am actually wondering, and I didn't get a chance, this just occurred to me while we were sitting here, thank you, Mr. Busser, for bringing up a couple of things that I've been talking about with respect to, you know, the equity matrix, and how we look at and audit, and that sort of thing, so that we're actually having some self-reflection in this area. But with respect to this new law being implemented, I'm wondering if But with respect to this new law being implemented, I'm wondering if perhaps you see a role for yourselves to help us to keep an eye on where this is having an impact? Did you receive, first of all, disaggregated data on where those higher discipline numbers were in which schools?
Yeah, we did get disaggregated data, but not by school. So we were able to do it by race and by category of either referrals or suspension, but we don't have it by school. We do have a gem on our committee, Mr. Bonham, he works with us in terms of that kind of data, so looking forward, that's, we could request that and do some analysis in terms of that. But again, we really use off-the-shelf data, public data, but in some cases, we do have to get very specific, have it at school level, to be able to identify whether or not there's a trend, certain types of schools, certain areas, and so forth.
I guess what I'm looking for is more real-time action, right? We have some changes coming, and we already have disproportionality in our discipline, and this could make it worse. So I'm wondering if there's a partnership possibly here, and I see a hand over here, so maybe Dr. Braybren wants to say something.
Just a quick nugget, is that the General Assembly passed this effective July 1st, so what we really need to do is get the committee, Dr. Boyd and some of her team, and we need to track those first few months. I know Karen said late October, early November, when you do your legislative, we could have two or three months of trend data to see if we're seeing spikes, where we're seeing them, to be able to inform. I also know, and I don't think our division counsel is here today, but he has been working closely with the county and has some legal analysis for the board to look at, that he is planning for the board to look at if he hasn't sent it your way. And I did have a brief sort of exit interview, transition discussion with Steve Descano, a Commonwealth attorney, and he's really deeply concerned about this new law and looking into it. So I think there's some county coordination that we can do too. But the first couple of months, we can put our eye on the ball, work with MSAOC, and bring some recommendations before you sign off on your legislative package, and I'll make Dr. Reed aware as well.
So there's one more layer I want to mention while I have your attention. That is that if we are able to see schools where we're having higher numbers, that is where we should put our professional development, I think. So, you know, in terms, I know we have cultural competency, et cetera, training and that sort of thing, but, you know, we should be able to do this in real time, we should be able to identify where those problems are, and we should be able to respond when we see a problem even developing, is my hope. So, you know, I look forward to that type of coordination and partnership. I too want to put in a plug, or just thank you for mentioning Avid. I've gone to a number of their celebrations. I actually think Avid should be available to everybody in every high school. You know, it's just the level of support that a student can feel and be nurtured into understanding their potential is what I think we are really about, and so I look forward to that being in the budget. So I want to talk a little bit about the accelerated math programs and whether you were able to look specifically at Title I schools and their accelerated math programs.
Yeah. Yeah, I can go. So, yeah, we did. In fact, in our report, I think it's on page 11, on, in our report, we did identify some of the Title I schools that don't have any accelerated math. So that's in our report. So again, I would have to refer you, I don't know if you have the page number, but if you look in our full report, we do identify those schools that, the number of schools that have the full accelerated program, the ones that have partial, and the ones that don't have any, and you'll see that many of the Title I schools do not. So, and the schools are listed in our report.
Page 15, yes. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, to your previous question, I think you have our commitment. That's also something we've, on the previous question, also with Skipt, that we've been on since 2013, 12, 13, that the student discipline, obviously, this school, the prison pipeline, we do have FCPD there, plus also the juvenile detention with Bob Birmingham, I think it's Mr. Thompson now, the new, so, yes, you do have our commitment. Maybe that's something we can also bridge it up to the Skipt with Ms. Tolan to look at, looking, maybe not have complete data, but something on the radar at least.
I just want to make sure the board hears about it, but thank you, I know my time is up.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Seismarheiser and Ms. Paccarsi will have the last word. We did start 10 minutes late, so if we could end within the next 10 minutes, I would appreciate it. Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. Thank you very much for this great work, and I really appreciate the strategic view of, you know, organization, et cetera, to try to get at some of the issues that we're dealing with here. Having said that, though, I appreciate the comments that my colleagues have had, and I won't repeat them during the late hour, and I have a very specific question. I'm curious about the cultural competency training, you know, that we have started with our staff, and I've had, I've been able to participate in several of the modules. You know, the ones that I did, I thought were pretty good. I'm curious if you've been able to watch those, if you think that there are additional modules or things that need to be improved? You know, I'm just curious, under your student discipline, if you think that, you know, where we need to go with that.
No, we have not watched them. Maybe Kimberly from our committee has.
Yeah, she did.
She did, but, and I'll let Dr. Ferris go, actually, because she's staff, and I know she had to.
We have watched them, and I think that we are making steps in the right direction. And we talked as a committee a lot about our trainings and how, you know, we feel as though we just need more. And we know that takes time, and we know it takes resources, and so, you know, I think that that's where we are. I think that we're starting somewhere, and we see it, but we feel as though we still need more. And we don't want it to kind of, I don't want to say, we don't want to start to slide back.
Right.
We want to keep it moving forward.
Got it. Okay, and you've got this great person here who created the modules, right? So...
Specificity?
Exactly.
Gonna be somewhat general? Gone into... Oh, broadening PD?
And then next step with that. Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Thank you again for your work, and I too am a huge fan of Avid, I'll just throw that in there, and young scholars. So look forward to continued work on that. And I appreciate, Mr. Becerra, your comments around Skipt and how we need to, big picture collaborate on all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Seismarheiser?
Thank you. And first, I just want to thank you for this really wonderful report. It's very easy to digest, it's very analytical, honestly, like I'm not, you know, just blowing smoke, like it's really, really helpful. Like, I read this, and I was like, this is, just even the way you do the charts, like, sorry, I can't tell with the mouse, you're looking like, is she, like, really, being real here? So I don't want to use up my time saying that, but I just wanted to thank you, it's very, very helpful, the way this report has been written and analyzed and the data behind it. I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues said, I too really very much appreciate the Avid comments, I do think that's a wonderful program. I do know Dr. Presidios, and he's not here, had, in a conversation I had with him around strategy, oh, sorry, he's there, had mentioned looking at our advisory programs and trying to take a little bit of that college prep stuff that we do in Avid and putting in our advisory classes, so every student has access to it. So I think, not that it replaces Avid, and I fully support expanding Avid, but there's, I do like the fact that I think we're looking at other ways to get some of these for a lot of our students who may get missed by being identified in these programs. One thing I just wanted to mention, you had mentioned using maybe ESAR funds to expand Avid, and I guess the question is, when, since ESAR funds are not recurring funds, that may provide an issue in terms of, you know, keeping the programs going, but I love the idea, and I want to try to find recurring funds, that way we don't run into having to, not having the funds to continue programs that we've expanded. Accelerated math, it needs to be everywhere. And the discipline, I was curious with, you know, with the new state law, have you looked at our S-bar codes? And these are the codes, the discipline codes that the state sends down that codes certain actions, certain types of violations? And whether there's any flexibility under S-bar codes to code things based on the age of the student, in the same way in criminal law, there is no intent if you're under seven, for example, and things like that. And I say that because there are certain behaviors that, under our S-bar codes, and I know Dr. Boyd and I have talked about this extensively, are coded as assault and battery, even for kindergartners and first graders, which can have some pretty serious consequences given this new state law. And so it's something I'm trying to talk to our staff about, but I'm just wondering if you all had looked at the specific coding and flexibility in coding behaviors for a variety of reasons.
I, I think me and Dr. Bussi can ping and pong on this one, but over the years, we have looked at the different codes, they do change, and how it reflects the imbalances and the equities of those definitions. And Dr. B has, that's part of the data we do get, also to help with the connections we have with the Skipt, with the offices that we've met over there. But, Dr. Bussi, if you want...
Yeah, I think the biggest problem with the codes are, the intent is good, from the state, but I think folks are going to need a lot more training, understanding, deciphering, they're going to need a personal lawyer, actually, in terms of that. And so I think that should be part of the training, to have a better understanding about the codes, how to apply it, maybe some case studies in terms of when it's appropriate to use this particular code or the other. I think that's the issue, getting more grounded in terms of that. The intent is good, I think the states did a pretty good job, but it, you can drive the Queen Mary through that, some of the things in the code, so that's, yeah. And I think if you talk to some of the people in the school, I think you get a better perspective about that.
I don't mean to put you on the spot on that, I just, I bring this up because with the new state law, as we're looking at our legislative package and looking for your valuable input on that legislative package, I think this may be something to look at, because if we're now mandating reporting, and if we have limited S-bar codes, or right now, our principals are using certain S-bar codes, like assault and battery, for students with disabilities who may not have the intent, for young students, you know, that creates a, you know, a principal may not, they don't have a choice there. So what do we have to say, this is a seven-year-old, this is this type of behavior, this is the coding? And that would be just helpful for, if you all have thoughts on that. I have many more, but I'll leave it there, that was my biggest concerns. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Seismarheiser. With that, it is 7:10. You put your card down, are you back on? I did have you, and then you put your card down. Ms. Paccarski?
I'll be quick, thank you. I too just wanted to say thank you. Like Ms. Seismarheiser said, the ease of this report to digest the information, I mean, this was, this was great. We were sidebarring about how this is really a model to be used. It really was excellent, thank you. And to see so many people here from the committee, I think really speaks to the great time that, and commitment that you all have put into the work that you do here. I think you've hit very systematically and analytically some of the big-ticket items that we are still, you know, we need to see improvement in, and, you know, with our new HR director, and I know Dr. Reed, having spoken to her extensively, has some new ideas that she would like to bring in that hit, I think, some of your recommendations, so I'm excited for her to come and discuss those and see how we can put into practice to continue this work. It's, you know, I think we've done a lot, but it's, you know, still plenty of work to be done. I was surprised to see that we still have schools that are not offering accelerated maths. I don't know if staff would, has anything to say about that, if it's now, if it's not right now. I would like to get some follow-up, because I honestly, I was surprised, and I still see that one of those is mine. So I am very personally interested in that for, you know, many obvious reasons. I do hope that we get to the goal reports, that we had to skip unfortunately, because I think there was a lot of information that you have put in here, but that requires some more conversation with the board around the hiring and retention issues that we are still facing. So I'm hoping that we will have the opportunity to reschedule that and dive into it a little bit. And I just thank you, thank you for all your time. This was, it's always excellent, but this year it was, it really was a great, yes, a great report, so thank you.
So with that, we've concluded your time this evening, but I too want to echo the comments of all of my colleagues. The thoughtfulness, the analysis, and the proactive, clear and concise recommendations are greatly appreciated. I know that Dr. Reed will be reviewing your report, I am sure that she will want to meet with you all. And George, I think this is your last year as the chair, is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, we want you to stick around, but your work, we cannot let you go without first saying thank you for your years of service and your leadership in really improving the, raising the bar. So you're raising the bar, not only for MSAOC, but raising the bar for all of our advisory committees, and that's greatly appreciated. So thank you. And thank you for referencing my dear friend, Cliff Hardison. So ladies and gentlemen, we are going to just take a brief moment so that we can have the Student Health Advisory Committee Annual Report presenters come to the table.
We're actually at the table.
Yes, hello.
Can you hear us?
Maybe they're taking a break.
They're looking for us right now. And what is on their screen, it's not us.
No, I guess not. Ah, yay!
So I was going to share the slides. I think you guys made me a host so that I could do the slide deck. Hello?[1654.21]
They're looking for us right now. And what is on their screen? It's not us.
No, I guess not. Yay!
So I was going to share the slides. I think you guys made me a host so that I could do this slide deck. Hello?
Folks, if you can please take your seats, we still have two more presentations. Thanks. They texted me. Yeah, I appreciate it. All right, everybody, our team is actually virtual. So we're ready to get started as soon as board members take their seats. Thank you. Sounds good. Yeah, you just let me know. Oh, we have seven. Okay, perfect. We can get started. So next, we are going to have the Student Health Advisory Committee report. As you all know, this is actually one of the committees specified in Virginia code. So I do want to start by thanking our co-chairs, Phyllis Payne and Brenda Sylvia Torma, who've been working really hard over the past year. And of course, Leah Skirpski, who's been our staff liaison to the committee. And then finally, just reminding colleagues that we charged the committee to look at student anxiety and to focus on that over the year, specifically looking at models of how to promote mental health for staff, students, and caregivers. So without further ado, Phyllis and Brenda, it's great to see you both. Go ahead and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So somebody will be advancing our slides, correct?
I will. Brenda, I have it.
Yay! Okay, wonderful. Well, my name is Brenda. I'm the representative from Fairfax City School Board. And we are pleased to share with you our, our year's worth of work. I wanted to, we wanted to also thank Mike Axner, Bethany Deamers, and Helen Canepa for being available to provide support this evening, since our staff liaison, Leah, is on leave today. Next slide.
Did you want this one?
The next slide. I'm still only seeing, oh, there we go. Okay. So thank you. So as you guys know, the committee consists of a broad-based community representation, including parents, students, health professionals, and educators. And we assist with the development of health policy in the school division and evaluation of status of school health, health education, the school environment, and health services. And our committee is guided by evidence-based public health research and making decisions about school health. Next slide. So these are just a listing of our members. You can find this on the SHAC webpage on FCPS's website. But this just gives you an idea of the number of people that are involved in our committee. Next slide. Okay, so as Abra mentioned, our focus is on student anxiety. And we did look for schools' modeling approaches that are helping students flourish. And that's a key word. By promoting mental health for staff, students, and caregivers, we recognized that FCPS staff on SHAC needed to focus their attention on the pandemic. So SHAC addressed the needs of staff, students, and the community that were either created or exacerbated by the pandemic. And at times, we felt compelled to act quickly to advocate for or support COVID-19 mitigation strategies, provide reassurance to parents and community members, and advocate to immediately support teachers and staff members, other staff, so that they would be better able to serve our students' needs. We had two extra meetings in response to COVID-19 transmission concerns. The first one was in August before school started. And the second one was in January. Next slide. Try again. Advance. There we go. Okay. SHAC's first-ever emergency meeting was held in August, the week before school started, with a discussion of returning to school and mealtime plans. We were concerned about the emerging threat from Delta and the rising case counts. And so in order to prepare for this meeting, the SHAC members listened to community members. We reviewed messages posted on FCPS Facebook discussion groups and other public forums. We researched evidence-based research information. And we summarized latest case and vaccination statistics and shared fact-based information from two government publications that you see right there. We included the links so that you guys would be able to access that really very easily. Next slide. So this is a really great visual that Phyllis found. The Swiss cheese versus between virus pandemic events. So we were wanting to discuss ways to ensure that students and staff, parents as well, felt safe about mealtime in school. That was the biggest concern that we had heard about. So we focused on the two guidance documents recommended obtaining six feet of distance during mealtimes. And they also recommended moving mealtimes outdoors, when safe and feasible. And so our brainstorming session included discussions about using outdoor space, eating in classrooms perhaps, measures to reduce the number of students eating together in the cafeteria, and other challenges and concerns. Next slide. So we met for 90 minutes that day. And all voting members who were present approved the motion that you see here. The information about our correspondence to Fairfax County Public School Leadership and Fairfax City, including our background report and the approved motion, all of that information is included in Appendix A of our final report. And so what you'll see here is, is we wanted to make sure that, you know, utilizing outdoor space as a first choice to alleviate indoor capacity and aiming for a 25% reduction of student body in the cafeteria by utilizing alternative spaces, maximizing distance between people when eating indoors. That was the approved motion that we came up with. Next slide. In addition, in January of 2022, we created, we worked with several, two other advisory boards. The Arlington Public Schools School Health Advisory Board, as well as Alexandria City Public Schools Medical Consultant. And this is when, January, if you remember, Omicron was surging. We had extremely high rates of COVID case transmission. And so we were responding to an effort that was made to remove mask mandates. And so we created a joint letter, so we worked with other, other areas to, to share our concern and to reinforce the idea that masks were helpful as a part of, as you saw, the Swiss cheese. It was another layer of intervention. Next slide. So our framework, we, we decided that we wanted to use the framework of positive psychology, which is the study information of wellness, rather than a focus on illness. In October, the committee welcomed Stacy Samara. She's a well-known positive psychology speaker and a licensed social worker. She presented about positive psychology so that we would have a better framework, a better understanding of the, of the field so that we could then apply it to our work for the year. So she discussed several things. And all of this information in detail is included in our final report in Appendix B. I just want to briefly go over this and be mindful of time. But she talked about Martin Seligman's Primal Model, which helps people flourish and provide greater resilience when challenges occur. She also mentioned in 2001, Dr. Barbara Fredrickson, who's known as the mother of positive psychology. She developed the Broaden and Broad theory of positive emotions. And the idea is, is before, well, before this theory being developed, positive emotions had only been thought of as, they didn't have any value beyond the temporary meaning of happiness, of pleasure. So she, her research noted that positive emotions expand cognition and behavior, which result in an expanded visual field, which increases creativity and wider consideration of options. And in other words, it's better able to see the big picture. And then the build component suggests that positive emotions over time increase resilience and can positively impact biological growth. In 2005, she developed the positivity ratio after conducting a study in which she examined individuals, couples, and teams. She compared the ratio of positive and negative emotions and their impact on functioning and mental health. And it was found that a rate of three positive to one negative was associated with flourishing, a person being in the state of flourishing. Whereas a ratio of two positive to one negative was languishing. And a ratio of one to one was associated with poor mental health. So that was an important component. And you can read more about this in the, in the final report. Next slide. So as we said, we did focus on student anxiety. And we specifically included flourish because it does align with the framework of positive psychology. We also decided to focus our efforts on identifying existing approaches that are working in one school and expand either the scope or spread of those effective ideas. And this was partially influenced by what we had, what had worked in our previous efforts, such as increasing middle school recess. And also partially because the resource limitations that we all had due to COVID. There was a limited bandwidth for policy changes. And committee members were on the front lines of this pandemic. And there was lots of urgent needs that needed to be addressed. Next slide. What we did was, we also heard from a variety of, of people in our community that gave us a broader and a bigger knowledge base. And Bethany Deamers, who's on the call today, she shared information about community collaborations and the multi-tiered system of support that FCPS utilizes to support student mental health and wellness. Mike Irwin, you may know his name. He's the co-founder of the Positivity Project, which of course, FCPS partners with, with their program to equip educators with resources, training, and strategies to teach students positive psychology's 24-character strengths. Its focus is on boosting individuals' unique five signature strengths. And Ava Belmont is the president of the Our Minds Matter Team Advisory Council. The group is in almost every FCPS high school. And FCPS is also piloting this program in some of the middle schools. And just in case you're not familiar with them, their website states that they pursue justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and that it's a moral imperative for our minds matter and integral to our work of empowering students to improve their overall school culture around mental health so that no teen dies by suicide. The last but not least, we heard from Leah Genova. And she shared FCPS's social and emotional learning information with us. And I'm going to pass it on to Phyllis, and she'll take, take the rest of the presentation for us.
Hi, everyone. So our presentation from Stacy Samara on positive psychology ended with this poem about the air mask. And, and that's when stories about classrooms began. Teachers were overwhelmed, losing planning time, and filling in for colleagues who were out with COVID. Substitute shortages were high. Teachers were on all the time and not getting any breaks during the day. So we shifted our focus a little bit to the teachers because we felt like if they, if, if we wanted to address student anxiety, the teachers really needed to be coming from a good place themselves. Next slide. So you really can't pull from an empty pitcher. And so we talked about just little things. Stacy had some guidance for us. And for the principals who were in our committee, we have three principals. One from each of the principals' associations. So little things that you could do, having plants in the room, fish, listening to music during downtime, taking breaks with the students. And, and next slide, please. As a result of that conversation, we decided to reach out to the principals' associations through our representatives to see what, what existing ideas principals had in place, what they were doing currently to help their staff and their teachers. And then we hoped that by encouraging that conversation between the principals in the association, that they would literally generate ideas for each other and pick up on those things. We also reached out to Beth Ikas, who was the chair of the human, the HRC, and some of the other teachers that are on that committee to find out what they thought of the ideas once the principals reported back to us. Next slide. And so we had this extensive list of ideas of what principals in FCPS schools were doing to address staff stress and help teachers and other staff members in the building. And the full list is in our report. This is just a graphic that Brenda did with some of the, to highlight some of the top ideas. And once we had examined the list and highlighted sort of SHAC committee favorites and ideas that aligned with the evidence-based framework that we were using, ones that could be the most effective, reduction in meeting times and frequency, regular appreciation and expression of gratitude, implementing self-care and wellness activities and wellness checks, 10-minute breaks during the class time, that would be helpful to both teachers and students to take a brain break and connect with one another. The teachers reported that the, some of the principals had hired classroom monitors that were extremely helpful when, because of the shortage of the substitute teachers. And a lot of those turned out to be sort of former parent volunteers who are now coming in to do what they could to support, you know, to provide support because of the substitute shortage. We, as a team, were reaching out to friends and colleagues to encourage them to sign up to become substitutes. And some of our SHAC committee members actually signed up and became substitutes in the schools. The other key point is that, you know, feeling like you have more control really helps drive well-being and performance. Next slide. We also reached out to the New School of Northern Virginia to learn more about their approach to wellness. And their wellness coordinator also uses positive psychology and highlighted three ideas that would work well in FCPS. Counterfactual gratitude for teachers. So asking students and parents to think about what would not happen if this teacher weren't in my life. And sort of the, it's a wonderful life model. He also thought a growth letter framed with He also thought a growth letter framed with the signature strengths for the kids who are at the Positivity Project schools. So how did my, how did I use my strengths this year? Just to make sure that it's, the kids aren't just learning about 24-character strengths and not recognizing, we don't all need to have all of those, right? It's about really focusing on your top five. And then the whole child and having college counselors really emphasize the opportunities at a wide variety of schools rather than just the narrow band of very competitive colleges that. Next slide. Okay, so this is actually a little audience participation segment. And I'm going to ask all of you, I guess we don't have a chat, so maybe just shout out. I want you to try to remember all of the red things that you see in this illustration. And in a minute, I'm going to ask you to impress your colleagues with how good your memory is. Don't write them down, no cheating. This is all about just trying to remember the red items. So take a look. Focus on the red items so that you can remember them in a minute. Okay, is everybody ready? How many blue items do you remember? I wish I could hear you guys. I'm hoping that there's some response there. How many blue items do you remember?
Phyllis, we can still see the slide, so I don't know if you want to.
Oh, crap. I'm advancing my slide.
There you go.
How many blue items do you remember? Okay, so that would have worked better had I advanced the slide at the right time. But the the point of this is that it's just to illustrate how priming influences our focus and our thoughts. So initially, we're primed to look for and notice those red items. And so what does that do to us during the day? Advance the slide, please. So what it does is what we we focus on, you know, something and then that's what we remember and that's what we think about at the end of the day and so on. And so there's research that shows that people who are asked to to write down three good things about their day are actually happier at the end of, you know, they have, they score higher on happiness scales at the end of 30 days and even months later. So the practice of writing down three good things about your day help, you know, you're thinking about it all day long, like what are the three, you know, you're you're looking for good things. And they can be small things, like I saw a hummingbird today, I laughed with a friend, this cup of coffee I'm enjoying, and so on. So as an aside, if you are sleep deprived, you are more likely to remember negative things. So that is one more example of why sleep is so important. So anyway, I want to just give you a few practical ideas that you can share with community members, students, friends, because I think we've all had a stressful, stressful, you know, few years. And so anything we can do to increase the positivity and happiness is a good thing, help us flourish so that the next time a stressful event comes along, we're in a better position to deal with it. So there's an app that's free. Good, it's called like Three Good Things. I personally like the paper version and I also, you can start at the dinner table just talking about what good things happened to you today, or we we used to do highs and lows. And you'd want to have three good for every negative. So relaxation and mindfulness activities can, you know, like drawing in the sand, I got to savor some chocolate today or smell the roses, those all count. Q-tip is about, it's a literal Q-tip that some teachers actually use. They'll put the Q-tip on their students' desks to remind them to counter the three Ps of pessimism, setbacks are personal pervasive and permanent. So the idea behind the Q-tip is quit taking it personally, quit thinking it's permanent and pervasive. Looking forward is really good for us. Your brain secretes, secretes dopamine when you look forward to something. So just having something to look forward to. Helping people identify their interests and their hobbies, things that fully engage you, you know, and help with the flow, it's. So these are writing workshop ideas. Next slide. We should be reinforcing perseverance. We all work harder when we're praised for our effort rather than just you're so smart. But it's also helpful to help people recognize their achievements. And if they underst-, if we, human beings, feel that we've obtained achievements, then that can help counteract negative thinking. And those achievements should be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. So they can be small also, like cooking a new dish, learning a new yoga move, what, you know, whatever your hobby might be. Next slide. So we support establishing wellness and social emotional learning as division priorities. You can see these are, this is the list of recommendations. We really didn't set out, again, as Brenda said, to develop big policy changes this year. We hadn't received the response to the previous year's recommendations yet. There was just our team, this was really, we had a lot of people who were either working in hospitals, working at the county level, dealing with COVID on at one level or another. Next slide. We also recognize the importance of including the student voice when preparing our recommendations. For the school board, we have a student rep who's fabulous. But this year, we also had the good fortune to get to hear from several other student-led organizations. The FCPS Student-Led Mental Health Working Group, Abra has been mentoring them and they shared their considerable amount of work and suggestions with us. And I know they've already shared them with you as well. So we really appreciated hearing from them. The McLean High School Students Epinephrine Injector and Allergy Awareness Group. They also brought some amazing ideas. And McLean High School is going to be piloting a program to recognize allergic reactions and know how to respond appropriately, including training students in epinephrine injector usage. And they're, I think they're planning to have the training take place during their advisory period, using, also using online training module, FCPS staff currently complete each school year. So that was really such an impressive group and their ideas, it's very exciting for us to hear their ideas. Next slide, please. And we also wanted to let the LGBTQ students know that we value, that they are valued members of our community. LGBTQ youth are not inherently prone to suicide risk because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at a higher risk because of how they're mistreated and stigmatized in society. So we we felt it was very important to make this statement this year. Next slide, please. This is our proposed charge for next year. And I just wanted to also note that we we received the staff's response to our 2020, or 2020 to 2021 recommendations in April. And so we really haven't had time to review them together as a committee. So we're planning to review the responses as part of our work in September. And then this would be, you know, where we would pick up after that.
Thank you for your presentation.
And then next, next slide.
I think, oh, sorry, I thought that was lost. Go ahead.
Yeah. These were our Zoom meeting anxiety reducers that we wanted to introduce you to.
Thanks, Phyllis and Brenda. All right, so we can go ahead and get started with comments. We have Ms. Stolen followed by Ms. Kizgimara.
Yes, thank you for the report. I appreciate all the work that your committee did on this. And I really appreciate the focus on staff as well as students and staff well-being. And I really liked the list, the very specific list, very long list that you included in your report of things that are being done around the county to help staff. And so I guess it's a public report, so I don't necessarily have to ask permission, but I would be sharing it with, I have a PTA group in Dreamsville that meets regularly and they're always looking for ways to help the staff.
We would love for all of you to share it as in as many places as possible, really.
As widely as possible.
Yeah, yeah. And we did, you know, the highlights actually indicate the things that Shack members or the teachers that we talked to or, you know, found to be particularly special or important.
No, it sounded like you did a lot of research and even talking to some of the private schools and finding out what they were doing as well. So I appreciated that. So I will definitely be sharing that, you know, with with the PTA leaders in my schools because they're always looking for ideas. So thank you so much. One other question that I had, oh, I, looking at your charge, I read the first sentence and I was thinking more broadly, technology and maybe social media. But then when I read the second sentence, I just want to clarify, it looks like you're very focused on the use of technology in our classrooms or in our schools and what the health impacts are of that. Can you just clarify that for me?
We, we do want to go beyond that. So and and we actually were working, it's funny because we revised, so we we had a narrower charge. And when we brought it to the committee, we realized we didn't really want it to be that narrow. We don't want it to only be how the use in the classroom affects their wellness, right? Because there could be out of school and out of classroom bullying, for example, or, you know, even maybe like eating disorders. We're here, we're hearing a lot of. Yeah, a lot of problems that, so we really want to dig into the different aspects and see how technology is affecting the kids' health and wellness. I mean, so it's, it's narrow in the sense that it should be focusing on the impact on wellness, physical, mental health, you know, physical activity, social, emotional well-being, sleep, those. Does that make sense?
I guess it makes sense. I I know there's a lot of research out there around this topic. So I think from a board perspective, it would be really nice to have it kind of consolidated, you know, with a school perspective in one place. But we have a lot of expertise also in our, you know, education, you know, IT department. So I'd love to see you, you know, coordinate with them as well as you're moving forward, even maybe in defining exactly what you're focused on.
Okay, we do have, I mean, our committee has, I I think we're, we have a lot of staff expertise. And, you know, if you go back to that slide with the committee list. So I don't know if we have the right IT people, but I imagine that Leah and Dr. Boyd could help point us to those resources. We're usually very coordinating back and forth between staff and committee representatives.
Great.
And we also think it's helpful to work with the other committees, which is why, you know, I literally reached out to the H R A C, you know, for some help this year.
No, I really appreciate that as well. I think that's very important. I, like I said, I really like the topic because it's one that weighs heavily on me. So I'll be very anxious to see how that pans out.
If you have suggestions about narrowing it or, you know, please let us know.
All right, I'll think about it.
Yep, welcome to suggestions.
And thank you very much for spending time with the McLean High School students. I sent them in your direction.
They were fabulous, absolutely incredible.
Yeah, and I'd like to see them, you know, be able to move forward with this project. So maybe in the fall, we may even come back and talk to you a little bit more. So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Absolutely. In fact, my background's in asthma and anaphylaxis education. And so I mentioned to them that I was, I'm very passionate about anaphylaxis education and awareness. And so I'm hoping that that's something we can circle back on to help support them through the, through the next school year.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. I will pass that along to them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Kizgimara.
Where'd they go?
We're here.
Okay. All right, well, thank you guys for such a comprehensive report. You know, I am always focused on what's the connection between these sorts of efforts and the expertise we can get from you guys and building that caring culture where we're making sure that children, our students, have a better opportunity to learn. So I do want to just have one comment regarding the charge. I think if if that could be the funnel, right? How are we building that caring culture, especially when, at least I have received a number of reports with respect to how students' mental health or how they're struggling with that. And 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 I think looking at technology through that lens, particularly for the schools and the various other things that you mentioned that aren't up on the screen right now, I'm, I'm looking to see how we can further support students, whether it's that social and emotional learning, whether it's making sure that we understand that there need to be boundaries around technology. I I I think perhaps that is a lens that may be helpful in terms of narrowing it down because that's the objective. At least that's how I'm, how I'm seeing things. Appreciated the the conversations regarding positive emotions, et cetera. Were you able to talk to staff members and our students with respect to the impact of those programs?
So, so the comprehensive list, we reached out to Beth, who I see has joined us. Hi, Beth. And and Leonard Bumbaka and then a couple of other teachers to see what they thought. I mean, so the the original list was generated by the principals with what they were actually implementing. And then we got ideas from teachers too. And did we, I'm not sure, other than our student rep, whether we heard from students about their perceptions of, because these were really mostly teacher and staff-focused ideas. So that's, that's about.
The trend for me this year in having these conversations is how are we making these, these, your expertise really informing our everyday, right? And so I I don't know, I know we've had some, we perhaps haven't done a student survey. I can't recall the last time I saw a student's survey. But it does seem that you would want to tie some of the things that you're pulling together to the student's survey and perhaps develop other ways to make sure that we're hearing from students from across the the county. Because while we may be implementing things, the real question is, what's the impact and the effectiveness of those things?
Well, are they working, helping?
Right, right. We weren't, we did not dig into that level of research or depth with these, these were appropriate. These were programs that the principals were already, you know, had already implemented. And getting, I thought, getting the principals themselves to share the ideas with each other had, we had a better chance of them picking up on, you know, peer-to-peer ideas and implementing them. And even, you know, talking to teachers and asking the teachers to share, hey, are principals doing this? Or we've had the opportunity to do that. And those are the kinds of things that we've really, that have really helped us get through this very, very challenging year. So I, we really didn't have the bandwidth to do additional surveys of students this year.
To work with our staff in that. And I'm saying this more, not so much for what this report says, but moving forward perhaps.
Yes, yes. This year, this year was a very exceptional year. I mean, for our work and for what was happening and sort of even for what we ended up, you know, we ended up having two emergency meetings to really address the pandemic kind of physical health emergencies that were happening as well as people's emotional responses to those threats. So it was kind of a, it's a different kind of report for us too than we've ever done or than I would expect that we would do next year.
Well, here's something then that we can take and maybe if we're doing like the risks survey for the kids, could we take some of the questions or some of the ideas in our report and propose them to the students and see what their feedback is?
So the questions on the youth survey?
Yeah, those are.
Those are in there. And what we could do instead is have an analyst, you know, really look at the data and see, you know, something about, you know, we could ask questions about how different cross tabs relate or something.
Where I'm coming from, I don't think we're, you know, we're still recovering, right?
Yes, you're right, absolutely.
And our community, our school communities are still recovering. And so to have an active look at that and, well, not just suggestions, but where are we being impactful? And then to, you know, bring that information to be able to improve our culture is my goal. So that's my perspective.
So I think a different survey, not the youth survey, Karen, isn't there one, isn't there more of a culture survey that's done of the schools? I mean, there's, I know the teachers, isn't there a teacher survey that's done? And then isn't there also one with students? That would get more of that sort of caring culture, like do they have an adult in the building that they connect to those kinds of questions?
Good afternoon or good evening, Phyllis. This is Michelle Boyd. So there are a number of surveys, a number of surveys that we do in partnership with our Research and Evaluation Office. And we can certainly huddle and talk offline about what data sources might be available to kind of help hone some of the work, even as we still navigate through this pandemic and how we might be able to look at how is technology impacting a number of things? We know we just implemented the new SRNR around cell phones. So how do we really connect many of the different facets that is happening to really build robust work with feedback from community members, parents and things like that? Still leaning into the technology and how it impacts student wellness and staff wellness too. So we can talk more about that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
What she said, that's what I'm trying to do. So anyway, thank you, ladies. I do like the focus on caring culture and how we can improve that. And I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, just a time check. It's eight o'clock. We were supposed to end around 8:15, 8:20. So next we have Mr. Frisch followed by Ms. Cohen.
I'll try to keep it very brief. First, thank you, Phyllis and Brenda. You know, your service this year has resulted in a very good report. And I wanted to chat with you a little bit about your proposed charge for next year. When this board first approved the expansion of FCPS ON, we did so with a pair of follow-on motions, one from Ms. Bukarski that requested regular reporting on fidelity of implementation of best practices for the use of electronics with instruction, with these computers and instruction. And the second was for me around providing parents with a system to see the screen time usage for their students.
I remember that.
Pardon? Oh, sorry.
I remember that. Thank you.
Yeah, so now parents have access to light speed, which provides them with regular information about their child's usage. As part of your charge, have you all considered seeing, working with the superintendent and team to determine how widely, how widespread knowledge of light speed is and what the uptake has been and whether there are unnecessary barriers standing in the way of adoption by families?
I haven't, but I'm writing it down.
Me as well. I have not either and.
That's a great idea. I think we definitely want to know that. And I do think there's also in the wellness policy itself, there is, and I can't quote it to you, but there is a, I don't know if it's in the regulations or in the policy, but there is within the wellness policy a requirement or a request for staff to report back regularly about the best practices, similar to what you said that Stella had the add-on motion. But there's also something in the wellness policy itself about that. Because as a team, we were very concerned about technology use and, you know, there's a lot of unknown about how it's affecting our kids, especially five years ago when the wellness policy was written. So we, you know, we had a built-in thing to review it periodically. So maybe, you know, this year is a good time for that too.
And to that end, we now have purchased personal devices for, age-appropriate personal devices for every student in the system. So certainly wasn't in place when that was a fact.
It was not and we actually had limits, right? The Shack committee felt strongly about, you know, kindergarten through second grade and having, you know, we weren't comfortable with screens at all.
And when you talk about engaging for student and family feedback, you know, one of the constant struggles for a school system of our size is getting pertinent information back in surveys that is applicable to the system at large versus just the people who responded. You know, folks tend to take the responses of the people who choose to respond and treat that as a scientific, you know, poll of some kind. What do you recommend for the purposes of having these conversations around technology and monitoring?
Brenda, do you have any thoughts on that? So the new chair, Alana, is actually sort of more of a subject matter expert in this area. But what top of mind comes, you know, to me, given what you just raised as a potential concern, I know that sometimes word-of-mouth outreach can be better with some components of our community. This, the liaison that we had, the community liaison that we had at Bailey's, for example, Maria Demarest, whenever I needed to know anything about, anything happening within the community, I would ask her and then, you know, fairly quickly, there would be a pretty robust set of information for me to consider in our PTA planning at our Title I school. So I think we could potentially do some cross-work with the Title I Parent Advisory Committee. And, you know, again, I would appreciate any help from the school board members because I know you guys are boots on the ground, talking to community members all the time. And so I always appreciate having input from each of you.
Well, I certainly like the idea of cross-collaboration between the advisory committees is something Ms. Heizer talks a lot about. Last thing I'd leave you with is perhaps there's a function here for the Office of Communications and Community Relations. So maybe that's something.
For sure, yeah. Any help that we can get, right? Because we can't, in our once-a-month meeting, do that kind of work ourselves.
Indeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. I know that my amazing appointee, Alana, was just referenced, but I felt like I did have to give her a big shout out for being one of those appointees who calls me all the time, emails me all the time if there's any updates that need to happen. I always feel very well apprised of what Shack is doing and I'm very, very appreciative of that. To that end, there's a couple of things that I was hoping to follow up with. One, piggybacks to what Mr. Frisch just said. Definitely about some ideas of how to increase awareness. I know many of us include the information about light speed in our newsletters every month, but loving ideas, as Carl said, about how we can better utilize the committee to help with that too. But also when we did allow cell phones or discontinue cellphone use during instructional time, there was a promise of continued professional development around digital citizenship. And so I think, you know, one thing to me that's always helpful, and I know our staff is always working to, hard to develop professional development for teachers and good curriculum for our students. But also, you know, what are ideas about what are best practices for some of those conversations? I know that those look very different. I think that we have really good curriculum in those areas. But in terms of cell phones specifically, you know, what kinds of things can be updated? And now that we, my fear is that we have students who now pivot what they've been doing on their phones to what they're doing on laptops. And we have amazing IT who tries to always stay one step ahead. But man, these kids are wily. They figure stuff out so quickly. And it's wonderful how smart they are and it's a shame because they get ahead of us in technology that gets them into some serious trouble. So any ideas that you have as you all search kind of in your work about different ideas for trying to stay one step ahead, but also best practices in that digital citizenship piece? Just to go back to your work in, with COVID, one thing that Alana and I have discussed is the possibility, and I guess I'm pivoting this to Dr. Boyd, but that now that we are hopefully in a more reflective state of looking at COVID cases, is there thought to looking system-wide, and if we had schools that were real outliers in cases? I know like in my regions, in both regions, I had just one school that just had crazy, crazy number of cases as we were in the spring. Is there any thought to trying to look retrospectively at the system and say, gosh, this concerns me that X school had so many cases? Like maybe we'll just do a look back, just check air quality. Re, I know that you talk to the health department when you're in it. But is there any thought to how we go back and just make sure that it's not something that we could be doing differently going forward or if it's just some weird outlier?
Are you sure that those schools didn't just have better reporting of the cases?
Well, that, I mean, that's part and parcel, I think, of a look back at the system-wide.
And we can certainly do that. And again, we can do that work in partnership with Shack. We know we did do some preliminary looks as we talked about outbreaks and things like that. And we saw that areas in schools with lower vaccination rates have more outbreaks or littler ones. Also looking at the overlap with just access to health and some other variables that were in line, whether there were pockets in certain communities that were more, had more outbreaks or larger outbreaks. But we can certainly do that.
I don't know if there ever is time to take a breath, but if there is, it would be lovely to get like a more system-wide perspective if there were those nuances that would be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
I think that's a fantastic idea as well. And I would love to be a part of that conversation. I know that I've learned a lot. One of my roles was as COVID case manager for one of the schools. And I certainly learned a lot and would love to have that opportunity to kind of debrief about what are some commonalities and what are some areas of concern. So definitely keep us in the loop about that. I think we lost audio?
No, 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 we're, sorry. Yeah, yeah. So thank you so much, Phyllis, Brenda, and obviously the whole committee for your, you know, your recommendations, your thoughts. I think we had a good discussion tonight. So with that, we will just take a two-minute break, folks, as we transition. Yeah, two minutes.
Thank you guys so much for all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Bye, Phyllis.
Bye. Great presentation. Good luck, Beth, yeah.
Bye, Brenda.
So we have Beth Ikas with us here. Welcome. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're going to go ahead and hear the Human Resources Advisory Committee annual report. So I know you have a hard stop at nine, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you so much.
I am actually at my daughter's college orientation. They gave me a student study room at the Miami University Ohio Student Center. So the kids are, yeah, they're like, what is she doing in there?
Well, thank you.
Anyway, Maggie is very excited to not be here. I think you all know that she had a wedding overseas. And Sean also is now present, so not particularly ideal for a situation for us to be presenting tonight. But I will do my best and answer any questions as well as presenting the results of our work this year. We need to try to share my screen. I'm sorry about the noise in the background. Hopefully you guys. Okay, it says host disabled attendance screening sharing.
We'll have our staff look at that real quick.
Okay. The kids, I think they're going to another session. They're walking by now, but it should be quieter again soon.
All right, go ahead and try that again. I think you should be able to know.
Try. It's not, okay. Let's see if they can. Let's see if they can. Are you able to see that?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. So scope and charge, this is something that our committee drafted last June. I know it was approved in July, but it is very general, and that has been a struggle for the HRC the last few years, is being able to kind of target the area that the school board feels is important to work on as well as our HR team. This is the committee. I don't think we have to go through all of that. One difference that we have with the HRC is that we also have a group of community partners, as you can see on the screen, members of different organizations that provide a lot of input and provide a lot of insight to our committee's work. We talked about this last year, the employee lifecycle, and we use that to kind of identify where we're working, and I think the next slide really shows that. Employee lifecycle and the HRC areas of focus. As you can see, there's been some repetitions in some areas, some areas that we discussed a number of years ago that still haven't been addressed related to employee bill of rights. We've discussed recruitment analysis the last couple of years, working closely with Sean and his team. The employee engagement survey and analysis as well, and the area of development and retention. And also just looking, this year we looked largely at the exit survey process and again, the employee bill of rights. So we were asked to come up with our high-level summary of recommendations. This report is very extensive. It's about 30 pages, and as my very helpful, soon-to-be college junior said, that's a lot of words. So I wanted to share kind of our high-level recommendations first before I lose you in the depth of the report. But the first thing that is most important to the HRC is determining the future path and implementation of the employee bill of rights. We've heard repeatedly that our FCPS employees don't really have something they can point to to help them understand, not just their expectations, the expectations of them, but also the expectations that they can have of their employer. So that's an area that we brought up in 2019, and we still haven't had that addressed. We understood it went to legal, we're not certain where it's at. I know Megan is a big proponent of it, but we'd really liked some guidance as to what that future path looks like. Analyzing and addressing workload issues as part of the focus of awarding workplace, especially this past year. We've heard in the different surveys that have been given to the staff that workload is the number-one issue as to why some of our people leave, just really struggling. And I know some of it is because of COVID and the pandemic, but there's other workload issues as well that we feel needs to be, need to be addressed. Also, the idea of doing timely employee engagement surveys. I know Sean is on, but he's having some connectivity issues. We did not do the engagement survey this past year, and we think it's important to have those timely surveys to identify trends as well as use those results to determine any improvements. We can also explain human resources staffing. The resource staffing really hasn't changed, even though in the last number of years, though we've grown as an organization, so trying to, especially in the talent acquisition management. If we were a much larger organization, we need more staff within human resources to support that. Also utilizing exit survey results to determine any improvements and why are people leaving? My daughter, actually, it's kind of incidental, but she wants to study education, and there weren't very many people in that meeting today. So I think the concern about that pipeline and getting quality in hiring teachers is important, and we also need to know why they're leaving. And so utilizing those exit survey results to determine any needed improvements. And then finally, looking at the Human Resources Advisory Committee composition. We're kind of a mix, as I said, of some community partners, but we also have some teachers on our committee and people who've worked in the area of, whether it be like within the unions, but also some HR experts. And I think we need more of that HR expertise in order to bring some creative solutions to some of the issues that FCPS is facing. So this is where we kind of get into, and it is very detailed, so I'll try to move through it quickly. But what we did is do each of these areas is look at the current state and really just share where we're at, and then also kind of what is the desired state? What are our recommendations based on that current state? I mean, I don't think there's anything on here that will surprise any of you. The idea that employees are feeling overwhelmed, overworked, not appreciated, they don't feel that they are heard, that their input is valued, a lack of substitute teachers and vacant positions resulting in increased workload and decreased planning time for our staff. Alana, and I've actually worked for a sub since COVID began, I applied to be a substitute teacher and have been working in new schools almost every day. And this whole, and I think it's important, because I'm also a parent of four children, this idea of increased flexibility and support for our students, especially right after COVID and the pandemic, but it also re-increases the workload for our staff. And so where is that balance? Also looking at increasing social, emotional, mental health concerns. I hopped on the end of Shack, and they're also talking about that. We've discussed it across committees. I think there's some opportunity there, opportunities there. But the social, emotional, and mental health concerns is an issue for our students and our staff both, and we need to look at that. Pay inequities exist across the demographic region. As I mentioned, our committee partners, this is something that was very concerning to some of them, and they felt it was important that we look at that. I know there's some, I think, and I don't know if Sean can jump on at all, but I think there are some issues in place to look at this, but it is a concern. And then the fact also the engagement survey was postponed. So our recommendations, and some of these tie back to our overall recommendations, finalizing adopting employee bill of rights, using data collection to determine what we, you know, to measure the progress of the goals, the portrait of the workplace, increasing measurements of recruitment, hiring, and retention, do that now, but to continue to expand the data collection beyond just teachers, because currently that's where most of the data is focused. We talked about planning time, increased support from admin, and then recognizing staff and showing appreciation by identifying best practices and implementing. So how do we, a couple of our members felt, you know, sometimes we have, we really just need to say thank you, and we don't always do a great job of that. We'll point out the areas where people aren't doing well, but we sometimes forget to say thank you, and sometimes that will actually go a long way. Focusing on hiring staff to fill the vacancies and substitute positions. Again, Sean's team is incredibly stretched. We do not have enough people in that area to cover all the vacancies and substitute positions as well as fill that pipeline for people that we need in the organization to be successful. And we discussed also a formalized mentoring program for all employees. Also, this idea is listening to feedback from employees on training and staff development. A lot of the staff based on the information and feedback that we got, but there's a disconnect, and I believe training development is, staff development is actually also outside of HR, so that was something where we felt that there could be some opportunities to ask employees, what do they need and what do they want, as well as trying to respond to some legal training that's required. Looking at pay inequities to discuss that, addressing student behavior concerns by ensuring that there's appropriate consequences and support by administration. And I kind of wanted to mention, we asked R and R, and I know that that is a concern at the school level. Is there enough opportunity there to ensure there's appropriate consequences for behaviors? Analyzing balancing the flexibility and support for the students with the workload for staff. I mentioned that as part of the current state as well. But what can we do to ensure that we're supporting the students, but we're also not just creating a huge burden for the staff? And then providing additional support and hiring professionals for mental health and social, emotional issues. Recruitment and retiring, oh, hiring, go to retiring. Increased staffing allowed for FCPS recruiting to support targeted recruitment and candidate care. Recruitment is led by talent acquisition management, which also organizes partnerships with universities and colleges. We talked about the Grow Your Own programs, which I believe have been successful. Teachers for Tomorrow, Early Childhood Careers, Educare's Rising Clubs, and then Trades for Tomorrow is also another opportunity, an area where we are having some issues with recruitment. And then back to Fairfax programs. These are all kind of current state, what we have in place. We talked about that, the fact that FCPS has expanded recruiting efforts at historically black colleges and universities, as well as minority-serving institutions and establishing partnerships with these colleges and universities. Supporting teacher preparation programs at colleges and universities, posting on job boards and online sites. We do do a lot, but we still need to fill that void of those openings and those vacancies within FCPS. So currently, there's a lot of different efforts. The team is very small. We need to look at where we're successful, what can we do to ensure success when we have that first point of contact? Where do they drop out of the pipeline? So again, considering additional staffing for recruitment, continue to expand and grow your own programs, continually spend efforts to focus on pre-service and student-teacher programs. Enhancing focus, increasing targeted recruitment efforts at college job fairs, HBCUs, HSIs, and A and M, APIsIs. Surveying our minority staff members as to what they thought of the FCPS recruitment and hiring practice and how we can improve. Surveying candidates who do not join FCPS. And this is challenging. You know, Sean shared with us that they don't necessarily want to respond, but if there's an opportunity to, you know, why did we not come? Why did we choose somewhere else? We might get some insight as to what we need to do to make them, or future candidates choose differently. Continuing to expand the partnership with the Equity Office to conduct targeted recruitment and hiring for schools that have little or no diversity. I mean, this was a big push last year, I believe Karen Keys-Gamar is on right now, so this was something that we worked on last year as well. We made some progress, but there's certainly more progress to be made. Continuing to expand training on leading and combating implicit bias within the hiring process, and increasing focus on central hiring portal, which provides a central pool of candidates. And consider direct placement for qualified candidates where appropriate. Incentivizing teachers and other FCPS staff to recruit qualified candidates. I know when I worked in professional services in HR, that was something we used very strategically and successfully. So encouraging our staff to bring in their friends, the ones that they believe to be qualified often, that is sometimes some of our best employees. I know that some schools, that's been very successful. Evaluating incentives offered to recruits and assess effectiveness, as well as determine other possible options which might be successful. And focus on this creating an inclusive environment for all employees, similar to what we've tried to establish for our students. Exit survey results and analysis, and we can go through the data, but I'd like to jump into kind of what we think are the recommendations. Sorry, go ahead. No.
No, go ahead, sorry. That wasn't for you.
Okay, I thought I heard someone, and I can't see when I turn my screen, so I wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. In November 2021, the exit survey was updated to reflect the new VDOE requirements, so that was something that we spent a lot of time looking at. And really, where the results were, teachers looking to work in other divisions, why they're leaving, reduced commute, pay, salary, burnout, and overwork, they're overworked. Classroom support left because they wanted a change of career, looking at pay salary again. COVID was very challenging for many of us, and also reducing that commute again. As far as operational staff, it's change of career, pay, salary, and professional development and advancement opportunities elsewhere. Top reasons for leaving, retirement, family and personal considerations, demanding workload to prescriptive, and then dissatisfaction with administrators, score division climate, classroom control, duties incompatible with educational training, salary compensation, and outside pressure from community parents, social media, and then other employment potentially in the educational field. So recommendations that we identified when looking at these results was providing opportunities for development and growth within their current divisions they don't look to move, and really kind of leveraging their, their knowledge and keeping that knowledge within the division. Reviewing and addressing pay inequities internally and externally, finding creative solutions to address any commute burden. That would be very challenging, I think, but it is, it's something that we've heard from staff as to a reason why they leave. Conducting work analysis and eliminating non-essential tasks. Balancing the need to provide flexibility and support of students with workload demands for staff. Again, talking about that whole idea of ensuring that the students have an opportunity for success, and sometimes that, they need more time, especially after, with the gaps that we've experienced or witnessed after COVID, but balancing that with what that means for workload demand for staff. And I know personally, when I was, I did a long-term subposition, and I would have literally students that took it and then they want to retake it, or they asked to take, you know, take it on another day. We're trying to accommodate, accommodate them as much as possible, allowing them, we're also out for health reasons, but that does make it incredibly challenging for a classroom teacher. Offering opportunities for classroom support staff to find other opportunities within FCPS that they do not leave. And then opportunities for professional development and advancement opportunities for staff within FCPS. Offering support beyond FMLA for employees who have family and personal support considerations. I know you talked about workload, allowing staff some more autonomy, and then providing staff with support to improve discipline, enhance classroom control, as well as duties that are compatible with their job expectations. And then staff development and support is another area that we've been looking at. Current state is that the professional development for staff is not led or determined by HR, and there's no employee manual documentation identifying employee rights and responsibilities. There's simply an employee contract. And since 2019, this is something that the HRC has felt strongly about and has wanted to address. Employees do not provide input on their staff development opportunities. FCPS is focused on a collaborative approach to retain employees and how we develop talent, including a goal of developing teacher leaders on the positive side, and that new hires are encouraged to spend time with their assigned mentors. So recommendations as it relates to staff development and support is decisions regarding staff professional development opportunities that input from staff as well as HR. Again, considering the adoption of employee bill of rights, as referenced earlier, ensure that there are corresponding policies and programs. And in the appendix section of this presentation, they'll say that we've already started to map the employee bill of rights and whether there is existing and corresponding policies and programs. Further expedings, exit questionnaire, and consider exit interview process to improve collection of data and identification of trends as to why employees are leaving FCPS. Also conducting an exit questionnaire for transfer employees within FCPS to identify if there are any issues or trends. And then continuing a focus on a collaborative approach to retain our employees and develop talent, including continuing focus on developing our teacher leaders. Mentoring, we do have current needs, but continue that focus on formal and informal mentoring relationships. Here is the employee bill of rights that we've established. At one point, it was much more lengthy, and we heard that feedback, and we went back to it and came back with a much higher level. The right to equal protection and universal application of rules, the right to work in an environment free of harassment and discrimination, the right to work in a safe environment, the right to freedom of association, the right to fair and equitable treatment with all supervisory settings, the right to progressive discipline and fair due process, the right to meaningful journey and after meetings regarding discipline, the right to equitable representation and assistance, the right to an impartial and effective dispute resolution process, the right to professional autonomy, equitable voice, and support for all employee groups, the right to raise concerns without fear of retaliation, and the right to meaningful evaluation process with multiple data points. As I mentioned, we cross-reference where there are current policies and regulations that relate to this employee bill of rights. And they are all there. Additional HRC activities, participating in superintendent interview panel by designated representative of HRC, myself, participation in assisting superintendent human resources interview panel by designated representative of HRC, our former chair, Leonard Bubaka, and community participation in assisting superintendent H, human resources recruitment process by providing interview questions as well as key characteristics and leadership qualities needed. And then also, as I think Shack mentioned as well, collaborating and sharing ideas to leverage learning. Some considerations for HRC is that the committee charge that was drafted by the members was approved, but the HRC did not really receive further direction or guidance. And human resources is a huge, huge area, so, and they asked me today, too, if we had a draft for, a committee charge for next year, and we're a draft for, a committee charge for next year, and we're really hoping for more insight from these human resources, as well as the school board, as to what areas that you think are the most concerning or pressing. Data needs had to be identified and were found to be more extensive for SCPS instructional staff versus operational staff. We discussed that. There's a lot of the data is focused just on our teachers, but not so much on operational staff, so we think we need to have data points on both to understand why people are leaving and what we can do to improve. The SCPS human resources and team members were often committed to emergent needs as we dealt with return to school matters and numerous other urgent considerations, and so it is somewhat challenging. If we had a lot of data requirements, those might not be addressed as quickly as we like or as extensively. And then the employee bill of rights was referred for legal review, and it was delayed. We've not really heard much back. As I said, we did introduce this in 2019, and it's something the community feels strongly about. The scope is quite broad, I addressed that already. Our recommendations from priorers were not all addressed, and thus continued study and potential opportunities for improvement have carried forward, and I showed that in a chart that we've come back to some of these areas. These areas are still concerns, but we haven't always gotten the feedback that we need in order to move forward. And then partnership with human resources was essential, but they were also drawn to other immediate concerns due to the pandemic. Our meetings were online using Zoom, but we also did hybrid meetings in 2022. We're not fully signed, which was a consideration this year at the beginning of the year, and we're missing additional voices until mid-year. The HRIC includes both committee members and community partners, as I mentioned, all voices are integral, but we do need clearer roles and responsibilities. We'd like the school board to help us define that. Okay, I rushed through that, I know that was a lot of information. I would like your feedback, your questions, your thoughts. Sean's here as well, it looks like. Yeah. Don't stop sharing.
Yeah, thank you so much, Beth, for the presentation.
Yes.
Yeah, we appreciate that, we can see you and hear you. All right, so we will go ahead with Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Tolan.
Thank you so much, and Beth, I know you're working on a shorter timeline here, which we all appreciate, so I'll try to be quick. I first just wanted to thank you all for everything that you're doing, and thank Sean, and I'm excited about the tag team of Sean and Dr. Wilson in addressing a lot of these issues and areas. A few things I did want to highlight. One, the employee bill of rights is in the queue for governance. Obviously, did not make it towards, to, into our slate this year before we ended the, the year, but I, the outgoing chair always sends, Mr. Frisch did it for me, a queue of what the backlog is and what's there, and so employee bill of rights will be very high on that list, so I just want you to know it is slated to go to governance early in the year. The other thing, a few things I wanted to address, the, I really appreciate your work on the exit survey. It's a conversation I've had a lot with principals about the process. Really concerning, A, of the timing of it, you know, they would like to be able to have those conversations as people express interest to go other places, because kind of by the time you've packed up your classroom and everything's done, like, you just want to be out and you're probably, you're not, you don't have as much in your mind that is helpful about why you wanted to leave. And the other is, I've had, I have amazing principals in all, all my regions, and each of them said, you know, I feel uncomfortable conducting those interviews, because what if the employee just wants to say, I think you stink, and I, and that's why I'm leaving, and there isn't space for that. And so I recognize with the, the shortage of staff in HR, it may not be reasonable to have HR do it, but maybe some sort of collaborative process where other peers from other schools can do it, and so I can say to Dr. Ivy, you know, my principal, Mr. Frisch, really stinks, and I can say that to you, but not to, no, you're wonderful, I'm just kidding. I really do appreciate that, I think that would be a very big change. I'm disappointed by how few people do the exit survey, so maybe in a perfect world, sort of changing up the process maybe increases participation, because we can't know what we don't know, and that is, it's frustrating when only 20%, I get it, but it doesn't help us transform what we're doing if we don't hear back. Another thing, just about the salary that I saw, kind of repeated the conversations, there was a follow-on to the budget about examining all of the compressed scales, so trying to go back and take a look at those years that we had to freeze, what are some ideas about how we help move some of those people either forward on scales, or is there something retroactively as we look at retirement we can do? So there's definitely an appetite for having those kinds of conversations. And the last thing I just wanted to address super quickly was, I'm really grateful for you emphasizing the Trades for Tomorrow and Teachers for Tomorrow programs. I'm really hoping that maybe we can, in good financial years, do some tuition assistance to try to bring those folks back and, and add years of service in SCPS to helping you pay for school a little bit. So thank you so much for all you do, and we're really looking forward to the future together.
Am I supposed to reply? She said, no, the main thanks person, okay. I might be okay, they haven't said anything, so I'll stay as long as I can till they like turn off the lights on me.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Tolan, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar.
Thank you very much for your work. I know it's, that was quite a long list of recommendations that you had, and it's a big effort, so thank you so much. A couple of things, I believe, and I should have looked it up to be absolutely sure, but in our FY23 budget, maybe Karen Kerber's industry members exactly, we had eight people added to HR, so I'm hoping that that would alleviate some of the concerns that you have, you know, with the staffing in that area. I know we talked with Mr. McDonald a little bit about that as well, so I hope that helps.
I think it, yes, I think it will. I mean, Sean, I don't know, I can see you, I don't know if you want to touch on that, but I know that that was something you pushed on last year, and again, discussed this year, but I think that there was more added to the budget, which was certainly be beneficial. And we can't talk, okay.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I had to hit my own mute button. Yes, so eight positions, I actually believe it was nine, two of them were focused on recruitment specifically, so that absolutely will help. And we're now actively trying to get those, especially those two recruitment positions filled, so that they can be in place and maximize the, the impact leading up to the FY23 school year. So thank you.
Yeah, and part of this is to your timing, like, we developed these recommendations thinking that we were delivering this report in early May, so there was some, you know, they were being carried forward, but it didn't necessarily reflect all of the new, the new headcount within the budget.
Okay, good, well, I'm glad we are on the same wavelength.
Yeah.
To my colleagues, I would just say, I don't know if anyone has openings for this committee, but I had very good luck collecting resumes in Drainsville, looking specifically for people with HR expertise, so I know that, you know, Sharim Anan, my appointee, that's her profession, so, you know, maybe we just paid a little bit closer attention to who we're, I'm putting on the committee, that will help. You know, we just put through the SRNR, you know, voted on the SRNR at our last meeting, so given the bulk of work that we do around the SRNR, I suspect that staff is probably already working on the SRNR for next year, so I would just encourage you, you know, if there are specific things that need to be included, you know, as you're mentioning, conversations with, you know, Dr. Boyd and staff around, you know, ideas you have for the SRNR, I think would be, you know, important, you know.
That was what you talked about, and I don't know if that can be a shift with all committees, if it's just more important maybe with the issues that we're working on, who we talked about doing possibly a midterm report to share that before the budgeting process, before the planning process, but these are some of the things that we're seeing, is too often we are going to be presenting after all of that has happened.
Right, but I don't think that precludes you from during the year even reaching out to Dr. Boyd or Dr. Ivy with specific ideas that you would have for the SRNR or for the budget, for example, too.
Okay, thank you.
I see Dr. Ivy nodding, yes, so.
Most definitely, we're always willing to listen.
Yeah. And just following up with Ms. Cohen's comments, you know, you mentioned pay inequities, any specifics that you have around, you know, what positions you're talking about, what those inequities are, would be super helpful as we move into the budget process as well.
Sean, you can jump in here too, because of the specifics, but a lot of it seems to be more in our, some of our support areas, and then there's also, I believe, when compared to other counties, that there's still some gap as far as our teachers.
Yeah, I think, to, just to add to that, a good amount of our time focused around compensation for bus drivers, and I know the school board was discussing that as part of the budget process this past year, so we did spend a lot of time, you know, really talking about pay for our transportation folks. We did get a little bit into the, the teacher pay and looking at where we were compared with, with some of our surrounding school divisions and our, our level and ability to compete effectively with those school divisions, and I know the school board, as part of this budget cycle, approved MSA and a step which will help us maintain competitiveness. I think the group really was looking at what other ways can we differentiate ourselves in, in terms of bringing talent on board, and so, you know, it's, was part of the conversation, we had a lot of different things we talked about, and certainly it's something that we can, we can focus more narrowly on going forward.
Great, well, we'll look forward to that analysis with you and Dr. Wilson. Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, Ms. Keys-Gamar.
So I will say, I know I had an opportunity to work with you, Beth, and the committee last year, and I know there is just a wealth of talent currently, at least at the time, and I'm sure that hasn't changed, and I think that we have had some difficulty because of openings and not having the staff and that support, so I am just so grateful for Dr. Wilson, and I feel like we're entering a new era. With respect to the exit surveys, I'm hoping there can be collaboration between yourselves and Dr. Wilson with respect to how we can be creative, right? I mean, maybe people don't want to talk to a person, I mean, you know what the best practices are better than I do, but if I had a gripe, I might just want to maybe fill out something rather than have to talk to a person. I don't know, but maybe that's one of the, one of the conversations, and, you know, I'm looking forward to, really, Dr. Wilson, you giving us some guidance on how we can get, you know, address some of the goals that the committee has highlighted. We've been looking at diversity for quite some time, without necessarily moving the needle in a way that I think this board finds meets those goals, so I, I, I have to say that I, I am just grateful that we have someone at the helm now, and I'm looking forward to the collaboration between this committee and her to give us, give this board some direction so that we can move forward in a positive manner. So that's, I just wanted to make that comment, thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else. Okay, so it looks like nobody else wants to speak. I just want to emphasize the employee bill of rights piece, I was actually really happy to hear Ms. Cohen say that that's going to be at the top of governance, so looking forward to seeing that come through, and thank you for your repeated advocacy on that. But with that, it looks like we are done, Beth, you are set free nine minutes early, so thank you so much for making this.
Oh wow, I'll have to go get some.
Thank you, Beth. Bye, Sean.
Bye, thank you all.